You just notified that a couple of our council members will not be attending today. So, all of the positions today will be a communication from the chair. And Mr. Rosendahl is expected, so there'll probably be two of us, but it will not be a majority of the council members. So, let's go ahead and begin.
Item number one is a DOT report relative to the establishment of an oversized vehicle restricted area near 25th Street and Western Avenue in San Pedro.
Are there any, Alan, anything special on these one and two? Number one and two? Number two, I think, is one for South Brentwood.
No, just this is the ongoing implementation of the oversized vehicle progress program.
Okay. All right, then we'll approve items one and two. Sorry, I didn't give you a chance. We had to...
That's a DOT report relative to an oversized vehicle restricted area in South Brentwood.
Okay. So, one and two will be approved.
Item number three is a DOT report in response to a Grohl Parks motion relative to directing DOT to examine the existing commuter express service to ensure that current bus routes reflect the city's predominant commute pattern.
Did you have on one or two? Okay. You had item one or two?
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll take your public comment now if you'd like, ma'am.
Okay.
Go ahead and come on up. Hand me that. Apologize, we were moving quickly this morning, so please.
I'm surprised I even made it here with the traffic on the 10, but thank you very much for letting me give public comment. My name is Peggy Lee Kennedy, and I'm a third-generation resident of Venice, California. And I'm really concerned with this committee, or the City Council, or the City of Los Angeles, passing laws that are expressly against people who might be homeless. Even in the motion that was made in front of City Council to move the enforcement forward, even names RVs. There are quite a few homeless people in the County of Los Angeles, and one good place to stay is in a vehicle. There are not enough shelters, we're in an affordable housing crisis, and if you're passing laws that actually say, "RV in them," it's really obvious that you are passing anti-homless laws. And I can't help but campaign against it over and over again. It's really anti-poor. Instead of helping poor, you're hurting people by criminalizing them. It is much better to live in a vehicle than outside on a sidewalk. Much better. And even if you try to go to a shelter, they don't have parking for the shelter, you don't have walk-ins a lot of times at these shelters, and the shelters aren't guaranteed, and there aren't enough shelters, and they're only at night. So where do you take your possessions? A lot of people can't even go to a shelter because they can't bring their possessions in, or even get them on the bus. In the West Side, the shelter pickups don't even have disabled access. I mean, the whole thing is not good enough. And I'm not blaming you, but I am blaming you if you pass laws that further criminalize the people that aren't getting the help they need, because most of them need, just need help. They're not homeless or living in vehicles by choice, although there are a few hippies still out there, thank goodness. Because, you know, Venice wouldn't be Venice without a few hippies living in buses by choice. The majority of them are disabled people, they're veterans, they're people that are sick and need our help, and not laws against them. Please reconsider this.
Well, and I know Mr. Rosendahl's expected here, and I know one of them, and just a little history, a couple things. This one, I spent greater than 15 years of my life working on homeless issues, both locally and nationally at HUD, trying to figure out programs and so forth to deal with the issue of homelessness. The original inception of this was in CD-15, in Janice Hahn's district, not for people who were living in them, but other city residents outside of the City of Los Angeles that were parking their vehicles, not living in them, but storing them on the street, which was the, again, the intent of this was not for, to go after homeless people, but individuals who were storing their vehicles in others' communities. And I know, and maybe, Alan, you can address real quickly, or maybe we can hold this until Mr. Rosendahl gets here, but one of the questions that had been asked in a previous meeting, both by Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Alacone, was specific, are there other areas where they can park their vehicles? And as I recall, there was, there were a few places in Venice that they could do that. Is that correct? Overnight?
Yes, Alan Willis from DOT. We actually got a coastal development permit that would allow vehicles to park overnight on our two Venice lots, those in the median of Venice Boulevard, east of Pacific Avenue. So we do allow vehicles to park overnight there. They do have to pay a fee, but there is a parking place that would allow these vehicles to be off-street.
Is this changed because the previous permit would not allow vans or campers in those lots?
We're basically working with Council District 11 right now to examine that program, and if we need to restripe the lot or something like that for these larger vehicles, that's something we're looking at right now.
So now, if you outlaw them before you provide a place for them, it's a problem. So now you're just driving them from spot to spot. With the 8054, which is very similar, which is the overnight parking districts, now I see this as, I've been scouring the City Council agendas, and they're just spreading throughout the city. There's quite a few of them now, all of a sudden. And you're pushing people, and even if they do open these medium lots, Ms. Grohl, what happens is, is really only a few should go in there. You shouldn't create encampments, and the City Council, nobody's going to allow that to happen. So you'll see in these lots that there's actually housing, there's apartments in these lots. They're not going to want more than a few people and RVs in there. So, right now...
I think the same thing happens in other neighborhoods, where if one or two show up, again, it's not, you know, the other people who have their homes or apartments in that area are saying, "All these RVs are parking in our neighborhood too." So whether it's the parking lot or the others, there's a rub. And I think what we're trying to do is find a balance. I don't see Mr. Rosendahl's staffer. She was here a moment ago, Laura. If you can talk to her about the implementation date, which is, this has to go to City Council next, to talk to them about whether or not it goes into effect until they've made those changes or not, to work with Mr. Rosendahl's office.
I'm currently sitting on a task force where we're actually trying to come up with a plan for people to live. And we're really trying to find, even in Venice, there's maybe 100, 150 RVs. Even finding places to disperse those 100, 150 people is really challenging. And I just would like to hold off any enforcement of these types until we really do get a handle on the situation.
And if, again, if, when Laura McLennan comes back in, we'll make sure that two of you, I assume you've had some conversations with Mr. Rosendahl's office? Okay. Because that is the implementing, you know, they would be working with DOT on the date on that, so, to deal with it. But I know it was a deep concern of theirs, as it is mine, of not, you know, working on the homeless issue, to just move a problem from one place to another, and trying to balance all of that, so...
You'll see that throughout the, what happens is these, the movement of the people that are contacting you guys to create these laws, what's happened is, is there's all kinds of signs going up before these laws even go into effect. So the little places that there are left for people to park, it even looks like encampments there, but it's because a lot of parking has been removed already through the Department of Transportation. There's so many issues, bits going on, that I'd like to see people really more aware of what the problems are. It's deep and it's troubling.
Well, let's accept, I know that Mr. Rosendahl is expected in the next, you know, probably five to 10 minutes, so we'll make sure that connection is made here, and appreciate you taking the time to come down here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Item number three?
Item number three is the DOT report in response to a Grohl Parks motion relative to directing DOT to examine existing commuter express routes to ensure that the current bus routes reflect the city's predominant commute pattern.
Phil Aker from LA DOT. And I'm joined by Michael Davies, who actually authored the report, and he's now moving on to another assignment, to work on the strategic plan, the cooperative effort between the Planning Department and DOT. So I'll start off, and then I'll leave the hard parts to Michael. Commuter express service started in 1985 as one service from Encino Park and Ride to downtown Los Angeles. And then in 1987, we got a windfall, I guess you'd say. We took over eight low ridership freeway express lines from the old RTD, which is now Metro. Since that time, commuter express has added eight new lines. One of them connects the northeast San Fernando Valley with downtown. Five of them serve other major work centers, and two of them are reverse commute lines that carry workers from central Los Angeles either to the West Side or to the San Fernando Valley and the Cano Corridor. And it's actually the one that goes out to the San Fernando Valley and the Cano Corridor is our highest ridership commuter express route. Most of these routes are one direction. They pick up in residential areas and they move people to workplaces in the morning, and then in the afternoon, they move them back. They're peak period services. They don't run throughout, most of them do not run throughout the day. In addition to the routes that I've mentioned, we operate MetroLink Shuttle, which carries, we use commuter express buses. When they finish their trip into downtown, they go over to Union Station and pick up MetroLink riders and take them up to Bunker Hill, which is the part of downtown which is really poorly served by other transit options. And that's quite a high ridership service, although it really isn't a commuter express line per se. Commuter express gets about 50% of its funding to operate all but one of these routes from regional funding, from Metro. And this funding is specific to these routes. We can't move it to another route, and there is no regional funding currently available for expansion. Metro just has not offered any regional money. So we've done a great deal to change the commuter express program that we have today within the confines of staying with more or less the same route. And we, there's a list in the report on page six that's only a, kind of, the high points of the changes that we've made. And I think the thrust of the motion was that the region has changed, and one of the things that was highlighted was employment. And Michael looked really specifically at the employment issue, and so I'd like him to say a few words about employment.
Just in summary, the context stated in the motion initiating this review was, of course, the length of time that commuter express has existed as a service, and the implication that conditions had changed in terms of where employment is now located, and that we hadn't, DOT had not looked closely at the routes in a significant period of time. Relative to where employment is, within the city, the actual concentrations that are best suited to commuter express type service, those have not changed significantly in the last 20 years. The centrifugal force of housing leaving for the North County, or Ventura County, Riverside, San Bernardino, there actually hasn't been a flight of employment along with that housing. There's been retail opportunities, some amount of other more traditional employment in those areas, but nevertheless, in the region, central Los Angeles County and coastal Orange County remain the highest concentrations of employment. That being the case, when one takes into account the other services that have come online for commuters since the mid-'80s, such as Foothill with extensive service between the San Gabriel Valley and downtown, and some other employment centers in the city, Santa Clarita, Antelope Valley, the MetroLink service, which offer bidirectional service, there is actually a significant amount of service available, both to the traditional employment centers within the City of Los Angeles, Warner Center, Century City, and of course downtown, and the LAX area. But in addition, there is service that exists to bring people, if need be, from the city out to these other nascent, perhaps, employment centers. The real factor, the significant factor for commuter express type service, Rubber Wheel, is to have a high concentration of jobs. It really is based on a collection area to pick up, typically in residential areas, a long run without any intermediary stops to an employment center where two or three additional stops clears the bus and serves its purpose to get folks as close to their worksite as possible. Where we get into corridors where employment may be numerous but spread over a corridor, it's far less suited to commuter express type service as we operate it. But again, the underlying message in the report is, we continue to offer, LEDOT, a service that's appreciated. We have 15 routes. MTA itself actually has retreated from this type of service. They're 400, 500 series, they have about 15 routes. They've now, of course, they've opted for the Rapid Bus service, which now has 20 routes. In some cases, they have Express Rapid. But also in between time, you have the development of a light rail and heavy rail system, which didn't exist in the mid-'80s when we started up.
To underscore that, since we first saw the light of day with the one route, the whole of the metro rail system has come into being, the red line, blue line, green line, the gold line, the purple line, the orange line busway, the whole MetroLink multi-county commuter rail system, and then Rapid Bus with 19 lines. And when Michael was speaking of these corridor-type configurations, Ventura Boulevard, Wilshire Boulevard to an extent, the Olympic Corridor, right on the edge of Santa Monica, Rapid Bus offers all-day service in both directions, and it actually, because the freeways have deteriorated so much in terms of travel time during the peak period, these Rapid Buses actually are competitive with freeway service, and they really do serve these linear corridors much better. So it's, we've changed within the parameters of what we're able to do with the service, but the universe of services within LA County and all of the surrounding counties has changed radically. And so where we were almost given the service by default in the beginning, as RTD backed away from such services, now there are an awful lot of players in the regional commute services.
So, you know, the concept and the reason we introduced this motion is because we hadn't, at least from a political perspective or elected officials' perspective, looked at it a long time. You all may have been looking at it over the years at that point. A couple of questions. Are you suggesting there isn't, and this is draconian, but that there isn't a need for them anymore?
No, absolutely not.
Well, I certainly wouldn't say that.
Okay. Of reducing them, of, you know, looking at those routes? Because if you say, for example, if you used to come from Santa Clarita, is there an option for them that is a better option than our commuter express buses?
Well, Santa Clarita, of course, operates its own commuter express type service. Theirs happens to be bidirectional. The message would be, as one of the potential commute means, under limited circumstances, it's still a very viable service, but it's obviously not the only one. Within the services, each of the routes, we monitor each year in terms of performance. There are runs that may not do as well as others, and in the current financial context, there is an effort going on right now to examine each of the runs for each of the routes to see if there's a possibility of consolidating as a way of saving...
And did you do that as part, that was kind of one of the things we were interested in. You did that as part of this review, or it's ongoing?
It's ongoing. It's ongoing. That was initiated as part of this, but it's a far more finely-grained study, and has to take into account the fact that the operating costs for the service are going to increase dramatically due to the new service contracts, and the full impact of that hasn't been, hasn't been experienced yet in terms of what it will do for our performance evaluation.
Because I think, and again, I never, I'm not suggesting we take away any, but I guess the question would be, as we look at it, where there has been new rail lines or new Rapid Bus or Orange Lines, and where we have a huge demand for DASH to create that seamless system, because that's really where we find some challenges in people take, actually taking a public transit, is their ability, and I know Lisa Sarkin had talked about this, which is, how long does it take you to get to those places? And if you have to wait for a regularly-scheduled bus, it may take longer. You know, is there a time in which you say, you know, "These two commuter express lines actually have options, and the people that are on there could take these others, and we could use that money to start a new DASH line in an area that is, you know, definitely needed?"
We're doing that now. Now, I mean, I think the caution there is, is that we're in a very, very tight situation, a very large looming deficit.
Right.
So the notion of canceling a service and transferring the money to other services, we're talking about a deficit, transferring loss, you know...
Right. Now, we heard the Prop AMC at the last meeting of this committee to look at that.
On commuter express, I think another important factor is, is that if you look at the family of commuter express lines right now, we do very, very well on a couple of lines where we have access to busways or HOV lanes. 448 out of the South Bay, and 438 out of, it starts in Redondo Beach, but it actually picks up very heavily at the Aviation Green Line Station out by LAX. Those do very, very well. We've added service continually to those because they offer a real-time advantage over driving your own car. The average time picking up at the LAX Aviation Green Line Station to USC, which is the first stop in downtown, we average about 14 minutes for that trip. I mean, it's, there's nothing out there that's as fast as that run. And so riders have, we started out with three trips, and now I think we're up to seven. Now, from the San Fernando Valley, where we're operating in mixed flow on the 101 freeway, ridership has fallen off. And so we're looking at things like the Orange Line connected to the Red Line as alternatives for those riders.
When's the last time we surveyed our riders?
Oh, we survey every year.
Every year?
Yeah. We survey attitudinally for riders' attitudes, and we also do a complete line-by-line ride check, where we have surveyors on the buses, riding every single trip, and they determine how many people are getting on and off at every single stop. And we use that as an input to the performance standards. So we're actually, we do that every year, and that's in our report to council. It's part of the budget.
And so, have you done it this year?
We haven't done it, we always do it...
My Palm Pilot.
That's right.
We always do it in the spring, when schools are in session, before vacations start. So we'll be starting that fairly soon.
In the spring?
Typically late spring, April.
Okay.
I think it'll be a little earlier this year because we had this wrenching change where we, we, MTA decided to get rid of our pass reimbursement program, so we stopped accepting Metro passes. That's going to change our whole financial outlook, starting January 1st. So we're just getting in the first data in about the next 10 days from January.
Which I continue to, as you know, think that Metro should have picked that up. One of the things you mentioned was the MetroLink service. Do we get any funds from MetroLink to provide that service?
We certainly do.
Okay.
We're reimbursed on 65 and 1/2 cents per boarding for a very, very short trip. That actually comes very close to making money.
Okay.
So, excellent service.
That's great, on that part of it. And so the last time we had a new route, when was the last time we added a bus or changed a route?
Well, we changed, probably the most recent change was, we had Community Connection 142 between Long Beach and San Pedro. We changed that to a commuter express. So that was a name change.
534, please.
534, which connects Union Station to Century City, was initially instituted after the Northridge earthquake because of the damage to the 10 freeway, so it ran parallel. And then the reverse commute route, which connects South Los Angeles downtown to the San Fernando Valley and beyond, that's 1998, was first implemented. We've done small, you know, incremental changes, minor changes in between time, but those are the major, major changes, a new route or two new routes.
One of the things on a separate motion I had introduced was about Wi-Fi on our, both DASH and commuter, well, commuter express buses more so because of the long. Any movement on that?
I think I'd look to, I'd look to somebody, either Jim or David, for comments on that.
Because we are interested, and I know, and there was a motion by Mr. Garcetti, as we talked about on the Transportation Day, about that as well. Again, making it much more desirable, and I know we've talked as well, for example, to the Music Center about commuting from your district to getting downtown. And I'll let Mr. Rosendahl ask some questions. My main, my main reason for asking these questions was, since we hadn't, since the council, it seemed like, hadn't had a discussion or looked at the routes in 15 years, from a public policy perspective. You all may be doing this every year, but I don't think it's been brought to the level of, are we doing the right thing, and with all the changes? And I wanted to bring it up to the level where we're asking, on a yearly basis, is it worth it? Are we spending our money at the right place? And to not just get in what we've always done it this way. And so that was the message I wanted to send, is we need to look at this on a frequent basis because things are changing on a yearly basis, and to be able to go to MTA and say, you know, here's, I know you've only, are funding these, you know, but we'd like to look at this option. So that was my main issue, is how do we bring it back up to the level of that we're consistently looking at options and alternatives that are going to be most useful to the user?
We'll try to do a better job at bringing changes to your attention, because we are making them continually.
As a policy matter, if we reduce the service miles of a route, revenue service miles, by 25% or more, then there's a public hearing process, and that decision is subject to approval by City Council. For minor changes, it just doesn't get on the radar.
When's the last time we did that, 25, when they came to the council for any action?
Two or three years ago. We've made changes to the 575, the Simi Valley, to Warner Center, and the 430, which runs from Pacific Palisades into downtown.
In his district, okay. And last thing is in the public-private partnership. I mean, again, there are a lot of companies, and I don't know if we do outreach to them to be able to see if there's a large portion of their employees. They were talking last week on our transportation hearing about Google up in San Francisco. They run their own transportation system, and people are moving to the areas who work for Google, to the areas where that bus actually goes. And so I'm interested, as we go forward into looking at how we do that, any potential public-private partnership, and, you know, I'm sure Metro has some outreach that they've done in those areas as well. But I think in the future, it's going to have to be a public-private partnership. There's not a whole lot of new money that's coming forward to deal with these.
Thank you, Ms. Grohl. I appreciate that. And I apologize for being late, but, you know, exit number nine, which is the one on the 110, the first one you get off the 10, our people blocked it off. Everybody's working. So the two lanes on the 10 that go onto the 110 were all the way back about three, four miles. I could literally not get here. Now, my hope...
It was done early, I came to that way earlier this morning, and at nine o'clock, it was blocked.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I don't know if it was our people or was it Caltrans?
Whatever it is, no one, including, I don't have wings, could get any quicker, which raises a couple of issues that have some relevance to this. And I want to thank you for the 430, the Pacific Palisades Brentwood-Westwood, Loyola High School group, because it does give an opportunity for some of my constituents in the Palisades to get on a bus and go downtown. And I appreciate you keeping that en route, even though there's been some issues about the kind of ridership. And I also appreciate the 437, Venice Marina Del Rayar Vista Culver City. I appreciate that, too. So I just want to go on record and say that. But since you mentioned MTA, I just want to throw a little energy out. You know I live near the corner of Venice and Centinela. Venice Boulevard, from the ocean to downtown, is a huge boulevard that is totally underutilized. The red car was there for a reason. The desire of the boulevard to become a major artery, more than the Pico business, to be candid with you, no offense to Pico and the mayor and Jack and all that, and Zev Yarszlofsky and all these other great folks who are... all these other great folks who are really thinking out of the box. Venice Boulevard is a no-brainer. There's no rapid bus. I like to take the bus to town. Okay, no rapid bus. And you talk about ridership along Venice Boulevard, and the potential along Venice Boulevard is awesome. If I had been on this council 15 years ago, I would have made sure the Expo line had an opportunity to have a spring down Venice Boulevard. But since the politics, it was garbage, and now we got it generated again, we're going to get it to Santa Monica, I don't want to stop the Expo line from getting to Santa Monica. That's why I am 100% favorable. That's why I want to take the Green Line, put it in the airport, and bring it up Lincoln Boulevard as part of the overall strategy going forward. But Venice Boulevard, please, take a deep breath and look at the numbers there. MTA is aware of it. My buddy who moved to the Hollywood area, used to live in Mar Vista, also knows that we could go down the street, get in Venice Boulevard, and zip downtown if we had a rapid bus or some form of commuter express. I don't care what we want to call it, but the ability, so it isn't a milk run the way it is presently now, which makes it totally impossible for me to take it unless I got a good hour, hour and a half to, to come downtown. Just on the record on that.
There's good news on that.
You have good news?
Well, it's not, well, no. It's been in the schedule for implementation for rapid bus for MTA. Now, I believe they're in their last year of implementation.
He's nodding his head of concern, my dear man in the back. No? Would you want to come up? A quick answer, if possible, Ms. Grule, can I just get a quick answer on that?
Sure, sure, please.
Thank you.
It's the two of us today, so we're in charge.
Good. And could we go back to the Peggy Lee Kennedy one?
Yes.
Because I want to hear what she had to say when we come back.
Good morning. Arthur Henry, MTA. The existing Metro Rapid program will be completed with the lines being introduced this June, including one in your district on Manchester is being implemented this June, June of 2008.
That's good, Manchester.
Venice was not in that original program of 28 lines.
Why? Historically, I wasn't around, but why?
Historically, there was a number of decisions that ultimately they decided to go with the Pico corridor instead of the Venice corridor. And Pico corridor is being implemented in June 2008 also. There's some issues right now about Santa Monica's participation, but essentially a-
Of course.
Rapid, a rapid on Pico Boulevard. And one of the things was working together with municipal operators to bring them into. That's why we have, for example, the Rapid in your district also on Lincoln. And also, scheduled to be implemented this, this year is the Rapid on Sepulveda, which Culver City would operate.
Right.
So it's kind of looking at a comprehensive countywide approach, incorporating the munis. As part of that, then Venice was not included in the original program of 28 lines. But what staff is doing, if funding is available, after this 28-line program is completed, the intent is funding available to implement additional lines. And staff has repeatedly told me that Venice is a very strong candidate out of, out of those major boulevards that have not been implemented.
Yeah, look, I want to, my lifetime, I am 62, you know, I want to make it. But let me just say this about Santa Monica. You know, they wanted, when I first got elected, a bus-only lane on Lincoln Boulevard for the Rapid bus. Okay, what they don't get is my gridlock on Lincoln Boulevard is due to them, historically. And the only way I'm going to make that work is a light rail going down Lincoln Boulevard, be it a Magliff or be it the Green Line, but I'm going to do it that way. Not going to make a bus-only lane on Lincoln right now, which is total gridlock all day long for my district. But Venice, which historically, at the turn of the century, was the red line, remember that. For God's sake, for not to be part of the 28, and not part of the moment, but potentially part of the next moment, is ridiculous. So please, if you can get the message back to them, tell them the councilman here is demanding them, do the study now, and say the study works, because it does work, and get a damn Rapid bus on Venice Boulevard, okay?
Yes, sir.
So I can go to work in the morning and not have to be in gridlock. The only good thing about gridlock this morning, I got a lot of other issues done on my cellphone. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Sorry about that.
No, 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 it's all right. That's right. So on, on this item, again, as, as you go through in your review and the survey this year, it'd be great to send to, not only the, I think, the members of the Transportation Committee, but the council as a whole, the feedback you get on those particular lines. And I know part of what your analysis is for Prop A and C, but I think we, you know, and, and to kind of report back, and maybe Jim gives a report on the, the Wi-Fi aspect of that, but, and working with the MTA and the commuter express. So we'll receive and file this report, but I think you have a sense of our kind of interest in this, and it, it's not just a, oh, by the way, it's, it is really an interest for us.
Pleasure to hear it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. You want to go back to item number?
If I could, number two.
Two.
I apologize again for being late. I just, I know Peggy Lee Kennedy schlepped from Venice and went through hell to, to get here. So if I could hear her-
Come on up again. Yeah, yeah, we did, we had a chance to, but we told her you were coming.
I got off my grand, went down all of the first, and I just did a zigzag through the city.
You're smarter than I am.
Really, yeah, because I knew I would make it.
Yeah, and I didn't-
I didn't realize it was too late. By the time I was there, I couldn't get off.
Can we either? That was the-
Oh, it was scary getting off, because I had to go over all those lanes.
Yeah. Well, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for humoring me and lobbying you. Actually, the reason I came is to try and implore that you don't start enforcement of this, whatever, 80694. And the reason, even though I know you say it's just a pilot program, and Councilwoman Grule said it's just for parked cars and not for people living in, homeless people, you know homeless people are going to be affected by this, and there's really no, there's no safety net. And what happened with that last one, 8054, the overnight parking district, now they're going throughout the city. You know, people, we have to work on solutions rather than criminalization. It's just, to me, it's insane. We're spending money and time and the Department of Transportation, and we just don't have the safety nets and the solutions in place. And what happens when you don't have the solutions and safety nets in place, you end up criminalizing people who really are not criminals, and they just have no other alternatives. They just have no other alternative. I know there are some people that are nuisances, but, you know, really, I'm sorry for them too, because they probably need help also. And the rest of us, who might be just regular people down on our luck, are going to be hurt. And, you know, maybe these people aren't slick enough to get a place to go, and they are sitting out there on these streets, you know, with no other hope. And then they're going to be pushed. Where are they going to go? Their vehicles are in ill repair, and, I mean, it's a problem. We need systems in place to help these people and to make solutions rather than laws that will, by virtue of the law, criminalize them. And even in the motion, it says RVs. It's a, it's going to affect the people living in them. And, you know, why can't you do temporary solutions? Look, on Washington Boulevard in Venice, and I'm not agreeing with what they did, they put two-hour parking signs, and I don't like that either. And I don't think they should have done it because it was not cleared with the Coastal Commission, because it's in the coastal zone, but this is not. You know, can't you come up, if these people are screaming at you, the RVs, the, whatever, and aren't there laws that say you have to register your vehicle after so many months? I mean, aren't there other laws that are already in place that we could use instead of making new ones that will criminalize people who are homeless? Please.
Well, I, I appreciate you saying that. Is there anybody who can talk about this from that end? Could you explain us? Help, help us?
And we did talk a little bit about your interest in ensuring that there was places for them to go.
Yeah, you see, as you well know, just for the record, I met with a group of folks who live in campers, thanks to you and your contacts and relationships, and we had a very, I thought thoughtful and from the heart discussion. In my district, I have lots of problems with campers and so on, and, and homeless people. I saw the piece in The Times about Ontario opening up a piece of land near the airport, and bingo, it turned into a tent city overnight, because there is a tremendous crisis in dealing with homeless issues. It is huge. And unfortunately, in the Venice area, I'm in the midst of a sticky wicket again, because as you mentioned, signs went up all over the place, not by me, that now knock it into just a few certain blocks that are in people's faces. So I got a crisis to deal with, and I don't have solutions, and I don't want to criminalize anybody in this world. But help us with the thing, because I know in Brentwood, we're doing a model. It's a study. It's a pilot plan. It's 30 days. I'm sensitive to not criminalizing people. How will this work in the context of what Ms. Kennedy just said?
Well-
Put it in the record, your name.
Right. Alan Willis from DOT. Just to reiterate what Councilmember Grule said, this, this particular ordinance, the oversized vehicle ordinance, was designed just to address primarily the problem of long-term storage of large vehicles on city streets. And it, and it came out of CD15's problem with people from Rancho Palos Verdes just storing their vehicles on city streets because there was a, a full-time prohibition for parking those vehicles in Rancho Palos Verdes. And rather than put them in a storage, an off-street storage lot, they're putting them on LA streets. Now, in, in Brentwood, what we, we have a request from the Home Association to try to ply that storage ordinance, basically, on, on their area, and we would basically post those, the, the streets where they have a problem today, and also post, post the entrances to the South Brentwood area so that the entire boundary and internal area, which is what they requested, would, from day one, have this prohibition. And, and part of the 30-day pilot is to see what happens. You know, we don't honestly know. We've never tried this program before. We don't know what, will they just move someplace?
That's the second word, storage.
Yes.
So, and what if you come across a vehicle that is, is a person living in it, it is their home? What do we do then?
Well, once again, it's a parking prohibition. If it's an oversized vehicle, our officers will cite it if it's parked illegally between 2:00 and 6:00. So if, in fact, there's somebody in, living in that vehicle, then most likely they will call for Los Angeles Police Department assistance, because-
Before that happens, will there be a flyer on that camper, say this is their home, explaining to them what we're doing and a phone number they can call so we can assist them in not criminalizing them? I have no problem with somebody's oversized vehicle that isn't being used by anybody, being dealt with this way. And that was the issue my Brentwood folks brought up, similar to Ms. Hahn did in the Harbor area. But what about that person who's made that their primary home?
Well, okay, that's an aspect. If, if you want to work out a detail like that for the implementation or the rollout in South Brentwood, we can do that with you.
Can you?
Yeah, we can, we can work out something like that. The original intent was just-
I understand. And that, that's where I am with your original intent. But can we work on that detail so that we don't criminalize these people if that's their home?
Okay, because, because we will have advance notice. In other words, the time it's going to take to, once this is, is approved by the council, the time it's going to take to actually go out and write the work orders, to have the signs installed, to notify the residents that, that this program is going into effect. We'll have a date certain. We were planning on doing, you know, press conferences with each of the council offices so they can really publicize this.
Now, can you get with Peggy Lee Kennedy offline and talk to her about that particular aspect of the issues?
She focuses on Venice and/or, you're focused on Venice and Brentwood?
She's focused on the concept of criminalization of homeless.
What happened with the other laws that started spreading throughout the city? So the law went into place, overnight parking districts went into place, and Venice has the small saving grace of being in the coastal zone. And so they have to, you know, go through, and now we have time to organize to oppose it. And it's very nice. Thank you to the Coastal Commission. But what's happening is it's actually spreading throughout the city. Now where are these people going to go? You've got laws that, by virtue of the law-
Hold that point. It's just offline with him to see if you can help us with Brentwood as, as a support system. If, if she can't, let me know that.
Right. I guess the question would, for me, for the offline discussion is, what would this notice say that we put on there be, you know, as an alternative to them, as opposed to just saying that this, the, these signs are going up in three weeks and you will not be able to store your vehicle?
Can you work with her prior to coming to council?
If she has a solution, sure.
Well, do the best you can. That's all we can do at this point.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
Before it comes to council.
Okay.
Thank you. You're very welcome.
Appreciate that.
Thanks for listening to me.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Okay. Let's think out of the box.
So, Madam Chair, is this item approved? Are we holding it in committee, or?
Approved. And I'm hopeful that they'll come up with, with some kind of a sidebar on this. If they don't, we're still moving forward with it.
Very good.
And item number eight, if we can just go ahead and consent, I, so we have one, two, three, and eight, if you don't mind. I know, then you can go, Mr. Hernandez. Sorry. I kept you first.
I'm sorry. One-
One, two, three, and eight. Now, we have just-
Three. We just did eight as well?
Yes, we'd like to do eight as well, so.
Okay, fine.
Thank you. Item four.
Item number four, the DOT report in response to a Grule Cardinals' motion relative to instructing DOT report on how the city can provide a real-time traffic speed information system similar to San Francisco Bay's 511 system.
Good morning. Varejch Janoyan with the Transportation Department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. The department is presenting a, a report with two recommendations this morning. They both deal with two council motions, prior council motions, 052477, which instructed the Department of Transportation to have a communication plan with the, with motorists for travel information. And the second recommendation deals with, again, a council motion, 072441, that instructed the department to look into how the ATSAQ data can be used to establish a regional travel information system, or 511 system, similar to the one in the, in the Bay Area. So, very briefly, the, as far as the first recommendation, what, what we are saying in the report is that the department does have a communication plan. It has many aspects to it. One of the key aspects in terms of, of this high-tech area is, is to have a website. We have a website. We have had one since 2000, where we take all of the ATSAQ information and display it in real time on a website, which will be, we will be able to demonstrate that for you in a few minutes. The, the other, the, the second portion of, of the first motion says that we should also be looking at enhanced technologies such as emails and, and text messaging. We, we can do that, but we believe that it is the role of the private sector that can take this information and add value to it and present it to the public. So, and that has been the trend in, in the, in the, in the industry. The public agency would collect the information, provide it to the private sector, and they would provide it to, to the motorists. So to do that, we, we have been working with the, with our regional partners, the MTA and Caltrans specifically, to establish a, a regional depositor, if you would, of travel information. So we have established a database that has information from ATSAQ, from Caltrans, from MTA Transit. As we speak, there are other agencies that are being added, Long Beach Transit, Foothill Transit, and the County Public Works will be added also very soon. So that, that regional database is, is very rich in data for the region. The, the primary purpose of the database was for the regional agencies to share information. So if, if we are in the ATSAQ center, we want to know what's happening on the freeway, what's happening at, at the Long Beach Transit, we, we have that information. But the second reason that was created is for the, to give that information to the private sector, so they can use their own investment to distribute that data to the public. And today, the MTA that administers the database has over 20 registered service providers, that they take the information. But they don't take ATSAQ data, because we have not given the permission to them. What they get is primarily transit and freeway data. So the first recommendation deals with that. We are asking for permission to give the ATSAQ data to, to the private sector. The second recommendation deals with establishing a 511 system. The department has been following the, the development of 511 system for many years now, since the FCC developed or established 511 as a phone number for travel information. However, we always felt that 511 is more of a regional initiative than a local initiative, because it deals, typically it deals with a number of agencies. The Bay Area, they have over 40 agencies contributing information to the 511. So we were looking at Caltrans and the MTA to take leadership in that, and MTA took, took that leadership. So using the, the database that I, I talked about earlier, we will be using, or the MTA and the region will be using that information as the basis to launch a 511 system. And we have, again, we have been working with the MTA towards that end. The, we have a couple of representatives from, from the MTA 511 system. If I cannot answer any question, I'm sure they can help. But basically, it's, it's, it will, it will be able, we will be able to establish a 511 system where the commuter will be able to dial that number, whether it's a cell phone or a landline, receive automated information about travel condition, transit included, and if they still need more information, they can be referred to a call center, and, and can be provided with more information. can be provided with more information. So, what we're asking in the second recommendation is, is the authority to let us, again, give that information and be part of the regional 511 system.
Couple of questions, and I don't know if we want to see it as well, but...
Sure, I want to see it.
Right now, you're able to go on DOT's website and be able to determine if Wilshire Boulevard has a traffic accident?
Yes.
Okay. And how long has that been up? I know we've been pushed for that, but it, you know, I'm not sure if the public...
We've had, we launched that just prior to the 2000 Democratic National Convention, the DNC. So, we've had it, yes, for the last seven-plus years.
Could you actually do this exit number 9 on the 110 right now? Point out how it backs up everything?
You can do that on the, I mean, I know I asked my staff as I'm leaving. Look on the, you know, where the, which freeway I should take depending upon...
Well, you can get that from the Caltrans website. So, we have a link from our website to the Caltrans website. Now, the 511 system will have a website. I would think it would be similar to the Bay Area 511 system where you could be able to do origin destination and get your travel time. But that is based on freeway information only. It does not include surface street.
Just as an example, I went to a funeral the other day, and my chief of staff has a BlackBerry that's the latest of it all. And he punched in, and it actually told us everything. And some voice comes on, tells us how to get there and what to do. It was like amazing. It's encouraging me to get beyond my moment in life. I'm not there yet, but I'm getting close to it. That was story one. It actually told us everything because it goes right up to the satellite. The dream would be, I'd get on the freeway, and all of a sudden, I realize something's happening, which I don't know what it is. Don't know if it's an accident or an exit close or something. Would we be able in this system? And I can't go flipping from, I'm in the car. How could I potentially know that I should have stayed on the 10, gotten off of Grand Avenue, and attempted that? I'm just curious.
Right. That is possible. And that's what we're trying to do, is to let the private sector, which what you received was, I'm almost certain that it came from a private sector. It did not come from a government agency. The government agency supplies the data, and that's what we're trying to do. And let the private sector use their own investment to develop these custom applications. So, what Paul will be showing here is our website, and...
It was running a while ago before we started.
Running under what?
No, it was running earlier this morning before the meeting started. I should have the website loaded on here, but now it's running out of technical issue.
Okay. All right, we'll keep trying while we're discussing here. What's the latest on the Metro's 511? I don't know, you know, what's the timeline on that?
There is, the contract is being considered by the board. It's been postponed a couple of times. There is some...
Contract with...
With the vendor.
Uh-huh.
Has been, the execution of the contract by the board has been postponed a couple of times for some protest reason, but it's due back to the board end of this month. Once the contract is executed, which is my understanding that it's with a vendor that has done these systems elsewhere in the country, it should take about six months to launch the LA Region 511 system.
And on the, you know, ATSAQ information, and they said MTA currently, Caltrans, provide data to the private sector. Do they have contracts with them? Do they, is there a financial, I mean, is this, this data is worth something?
Well, right now, the, we couldn't put a value on the data. No one else in the country, at least at the local level, charged for their data because most of the private sector, or all of the private sector information has been focusing on the freeway data. And historically, they've always gotten the freeway for free, data for free.
So, MTA and Caltrans do not charge anything to those people who have access to their information?
That is correct. Now, the agreement between the MTA and the service provider says that in the future, if we change our minds and we want to charge for our data, we could do that. And just to let you know that we're doing this, we're going to charge you $100 to sign up. So, that was just a token fee, just to let them know that there is possibly...
It's like a contract.
Exactly. So, in our case, if we find in the future that there is a value, there is a market for this data, and there are companies that are making money out of our data, and we decide to take a share of that revenue, we can still do that in the future. But initially, we don't know what the market is. So, we're saying, let's put it out there. Let's see if, what the marketplace can do with our information. You know, our information is local street only. Now, as extensive as the ATSAQ system is, it's still, that's still one city out of 88 cities. So, for a private sector to build an application for, that includes surface street, that means they will get only city of LA information, ATSAQ information only. No one else in the county has surface street.
No, not providing the same or surface street information?
No. So, that's where our dilemma is, whether there's a private sector that's willing to build an application just to include ATSAQ data.
What's the chance of getting the other 87 cities, MTA, on the same wavelength?
They're all trying, and they want to build their own systems, but to my knowledge, there really hasn't been a lot of progress made to establish a huge surveillance system, which is the ATSAQ system, as we have over 16,000 sensors on our surface street.
So, if you're, you know, currently, today, if you go, I want to decide where I'm going to go. And again, I know my staff does that on the Caltrans before I walk out the door on that. But they can similarly, they'd have to go to two separate sites to get the Caltrans and get DOT's information, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And with the 511, will they be able to go to one system that can tell them that?
Yes. Actually, today, we have a system through the MTA, and you could do, you could do both surface street and freeway on one website. But it will be, it's in the process of being enhanced to be a lot faster, a lot more user-friendly.
And that is separate from the 511?
That's separate from the 511.
And who has control of that being?
The MTA. The MTA. We feed the information to the MTA, and then the MTA created this website that has transit, freeway, and ATSAQ data.
So, I could get that today?
Yes. You can go to...
But if we get that today, can we somehow find out from MTA? Or MTA do the outreach to see that the other 87 cities become participant in what seems to be an absolutely good idea?
The other cities that has...
I mean, like county supervisor. We've got five county supervisors. They sit on the MTA board. It's in their best interest to get all of those 88 towns on the same wavelength, right?
Right. The, right now, the County Public Works Department is spearheading an effort to get all of these agencies connected. And we have a link to, we will have a link to the county system. So, the way it works is that all of the agencies, the small agencies talks to the county, and the county talks to the MTA.
So, the county MTA board could put out a policy, couldn't they not, to everybody within the county? We all want to get on the same wavelength so that it's a seamless, because the commuter doesn't care what town they're in. They just want to figure out how to get to where they go.
Right.
Frankly, if we had our dream, we'd go from San Diego to Santa Barbara and all of Southern California would be on the same thing. I mean, when Bart Reed comes in the door here, you know he had to go through six buses to get here, but he knows his way around. Are we working in that direction? Is there a timetable? Is there a report back? Is there anything going on, on the county level, that gives us some help and hope? We need a motion from our city to...
I think MTA staff is here. If they can come forward and talk about their system, I think that they are doing exactly what you're talking about. I'm just not sure about the timelines.
Yes, I'd love to hear that, just for...
Okay. Just one note. This is the, an MTA website that is being fed by surface street, transit, and freeway information. So, you could get the surface street information in the center. Now, granted, it is, it's kind of slow today, and that's what we need to update it. It's going to be updated to be more of a geo-based system with higher speeds. But that's where, one avenue where you can get freeway and surface street information, and if you want transit information as well.
So, can, if I say I am leaving here and going to the west side, can it quickly, easily? I mean, you know, we're in an age of people want it to be fast, easy, and accessible, and not have to go to two different places, and that's really the intent of what we're looking for.
Right, right. I mean, if you're referring to something like Google or MapQuest where you say, I want to go from point A to point B, give me the shortest route or the fastest route, we're not there. Most of these routes, Google, for example, gives you a route based on freeway speeds. If you change the route and you want to take surface street, it still gives you a route, but it is, for the surface street portion, it is not based on real-time data. It is based on historical data. But the freeway is based on real-time data.
How do we get to that point?
I see that the 511 system will have that feature. We are in the process of updating our own website. We could look into that to make it faster. But I agree with you that the system, our systems or our websites right now don't have that trip planning, if you would, feature.
When you say real-time data, do you mean, for instance, if I punched it in now, it would tell me that there's a collision here, and it might take 30 minutes rather than the normal 15 minutes?
It tells you, on our website, this is the ATSAQ website. So, you can see the green links. That means the speed is 20-plus mile per hour. If you can go a little, you can navigate. You can see yellow and red. That means the yellow is moderate speed, and the red is low speed.
Uh-huh.
So, it gives you an indication of the speed, but it doesn't tell you exactly what's causing the problem. Now, we have on the side, we have alerts where, if, for example, if you go to the downtown system, you will see information about the First Street Bridge closure for the East Side Light Rail. And it gives all that information. It gives the routing detour, and then it gives the real-time data from the ATSAQ system.
That's excellent. Could that, right now, tell me about that 110-10 freeway exit 9? No?
No.
Why not?
Because that's a freeway information.
You'd have to go to Caltrans.
Right.
That's why the 511 system is so important, because you want to be able to have all of it together.
To link it all together.
Because it's frustrating.
Yeah. Because, you know, the dream is to grab, I mean, I'll have to get to this Palm Pilot world, but get to it and punch it on right then and there and be able to tell me, Rosendahl, go straight on the 10, get off of Grand, and come down that way, because you're never going to make it off to the side there. Is that our dream come true? We would dial 511 onto that kind of a gizmo?
It's possible. It's possible. And what we're saying is, we have the information. We just want to pass it to the private sector. Let them do the development.
Now, who's the big private sector gurus on this, that are doing this?
MTA want to come up too? You were on your way up and...
Yeah. I mean, who are we dealing with when you say private sector? It sounds like magic.
No, private sector, it's websites, whether it's MapQuest or Google or a lot of other vendors. There are vendors who would, for example, Traffic Gauge. It's a company in the Bay Area that has a small device like a Palm Pilot with real-time information. They take information from Caltrans today, and they make it available to the public. There are other vendors who might take subscription from the public for, to give them information on route-specific. So, you can register with them and say, give me every, 7 o'clock every morning, send me an email or a text message. Tell me what's the traffic like from West LA to downtown. And they will do that, but you have to pay for it.
Uh-huh.
And that's how they make their money.
I see. I see. Well, as Ms. Gru said, the dream for us will be, you dial 511, and it tells you whatever you need to know about where you need to go, and get all those links tied in together that works. We'd love to hear from MTA on what we were saying.
Certainly. Ken Coleman, I'm the program manager over the 511 program that's in development right now.
Great.
Generally, to sort of echo what staff has been saying, we are basically working on a program that is, the intent is to try and have a single point of contact via the phone and the web where we get all this disparate information put into one source so that the public can now go to that for traffic information, transit information, rideshare, Vampul, all those different items that we need to do. The initial deployment phases that we're looking at are primarily to try and get the first system set up together, get all this disparate information, provide a system that has a baseline of basically freeway transit, freeway traffic, transit information. And by freeway traffic information, it would include things such as incidents, congestion, travel times, travel speeds, so on and so forth. Then, we would go into transit issues, rideshare, MetroLink, and others. Phase 2, where we're looking at quickly after thereafter, which is about, phase 1, we're looking at about six-month deployment from contract award to start. Phase 2 would start right after that, where we would look at things such as personalization, which we'd take into account, Mr. Chairman, where you could say, you know, this is my route. You register, and if there's something along that route, we could email you with a notice. We can phone you with a notice saying, hey, something happened on that route you should be aware of. And that way, you can then make the choice as to whether or not you would actually take a different route or not. So, those are the type of things we are looking at trying to do.
Time frame, you said once a vendor and this and that. What are we looking at? Today is the, what?
Today...
It's the 4th of February 2008.
Right now, what we're looking at is if we get board authorization, which is later on this month, we would have six months. So, we're looking at anywhere from an August to September timeframe of the initial phase, which is, again, focused primarily on the freeway transit, rideshare stuff. And then, probably within a year, if not less than that, we would get into the personalization, airport information, things such as special event information. Let's say if something's happened in Staples Center, Dodger Center, Dodger Stadium that you want to provide, that creates additional traffic. We could provide information to the public about that and other areas and things like that.
Could we have a report back somehow another to us in six months that you were on target?
We could do that.
Great.
And have we done, have we publicized the fact that it's been in existence since 2000?
It's on the department website, and we know it's been used because every time, it's used on a daily basis, but more so during special events. I mean, we've seen some real high peaks during...
Do we have data that, on the, I mean, the hits? Should we be able to know?
We can query the ITA.
Great.
I'd be interested in seeing that, because, again, a lot of the people I talk to now, they, you know, have no idea the success. And it's only as useful as when people actually know, and it's the ease of doing it, and, you know, so...
My dream would be, once you can get us that information, I'll do an email blast to my constituents, which I do all the time, and give them, you know, some more resources to work with.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I'd just add that we do have it on our tips guide that was issued in, I think, 2002, 2003, and it is on our website. If you go to Real-Time Traffic Information, it will direct you to the actual website.
Okay. And I think the point, though, that Mr. Rosendahl made too, which is, as you're driving, as we try to make people drive safely, what's going to be, then the 511 may be that system that is not going to cause us, you know, traffic congestion and problems because they're looking at their BlackBerrys. I'm sure none of us do.
You've got to get the Bluetooth in our ear, remember, because we can't use the phone anymore, starting when July...
July 1st.
New technology every day.
It'll be okay.
Well, you have your Palm Pilot, just stick it to your ear.
I know!
So, I think on this item, you know, so, in the data having value on this, I mean, is there any other local government, I mean, or provides information that has any value associated with it? If we're just releasing it for free, other than we get $100, is there any other?
It's, to my knowledge, I don't know of any other public agency that charges for data. That doesn't mean that we cannot ask for revenue back. But it's a chicken and egg thing. What's the value? And we don't know the value until we figure out whether there's a market for it. And if there's a market, then what's the value worth? So, it's, so what we're trying to do is to put the data out there first and see who can use it.
And we have the same kind of language that MTA has, which allows us to come back? And we have the same kind of language that MTA has, which allows us to come back?
Well, it's... We give data through the MTA, so we don't... We will not have a direct agreement with the service provider. The system was set up so that the service provider would have a contract with one entity, and that's the MTA. But we could...
If MTA decides at some point to charge for it...
We could...
Charge for that, it is in the agreement with what you're going to have with MTA.
Yes.
Assure that they're...
We could charge for the data as well.
But, you know, they could sell it, and we would not get anything from it.
Right. I mean, even if Caltrans and the MTA, they don't want to charge for data and the city does, we could still ask for charge, to charge for the data.
I just want to make sure that whatever contract that we are developing, that there is the flexibility that at some point, if it is valuable, and I think it has some value, the question is, is it, you know, right now, will anyone pay for it, depending upon the time? So I think if... Because you have to get the council's approval to give this data to MTA. Is that correct?
That's correct. And that's what we're trying to do here.
Okay. So I just want to make sure when we come to council that there's language within that, any agreement and instructions within this report that says there may be a point in time that we will charge for that.
Okay. So do we need to amend the report, then?
Yeah. And I'll just look to the CLA to work.
You've included that language in the contract right now. Is that correct or not?
Well, the contract is between the MTA and the vendor.
Correct. So if MTA in the future decided to charge, would we then be able to charge MTA?
Yes.
Okay.
And that charge will come back to the city?
That's in the contract, because I just heard you say you weren't sure if it was in the contract. So you all can work out the language if it's not included in this report.
Then we'll amend it in council.
Amend it in council or, you know, in the report that includes that language.
All right.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item?
Item number five is a DOT report in response to rural Garcia Parks motion relative to directing DOT to undertake a comprehensive assessment of current traffic conditions in the steady area of Magnolia Boulevard and Colfax Avenue.
I'm Sergio Valdez with Department of Transportation. And I'm reporting back a couple of things. First of all is that we've... DOT has been working with the Department of City Planning to make sure that any projects that come in in this area are going to be looked at in a cumulative manner. And we have actually been doing that already. We've had actually projects that have come in, three condominium projects that came in on the same block, and we had them do a cumulative traffic study. So any growth that's going to be taking place in this area will be looked at cumulatively to ensure that traffic impacts will be mitigated. Another thing that I'd like to do is... It's not in the report, but something that I'd like to go through and have added is that also if a city councilor could be instructed building in safety to add a ZI... And I've been talking... Subsequent to this report, I've been talking to building and safety. If building and safety could be instructed to add a ZI, which is called a zoning information code, which is basically just a code that they add to parcels to the properties located within the boundaries of this area, which is basically Laurel Canyon, Chandler, Colfax, and Magnolia to the south, basically almost Hartsuck, but Hartsuck is mostly single-family, so that really wouldn't apply there, that would instruct any... Before any building permits are issued in this area, the developer or the contractor would have to come see the Department of Transportation and also the Department of City Planning to ensure that they are abiding by this cumulative... By the cumulative traffic studies that we want to have done here. So it's not in the report, but it would be something that would definitely... That would ensure that all new developments in the area are captured and looked at by Department of City Planning and also by us, by DOT.
And so how do we ensure that that regularly happens?
It would be by putting in what's called a ZI number on all the parcels within that area. It's a number that's put in... It's a code that's basically assigned to those parcels. And building and safety puts them in. That way, when the plant comes in, the plant checker would... It would say, you know, like, "ZI 1455" or something. And it would say, "Oh, it says here you have to see DOT and DCP for cumulative traffic impacts." And then they would be assured to come to see us. And it would ensure that no projects would get in without us being aware of them.
Okay. So I get that part. That's kind of what we wanted on this. But how do we ensure that it gets a ZI number and that it's not just Colfax and Magnolia? You know, some of my constituents from other parts of Studio City, for example, but there are other parts, even probably Mr. Rosen Dell's area and so forth. How do we ensure that that becomes the regular practice in this so that it's not having a... You know, we caught this because we had so many happening, and we found they weren't doing any kind of cumulative effect analysis. Is it an ordinance? Is it a direction?
It's really more of a motion, a motion that would have to be to instruct building and safety to put that in. But I don't know how wide you can actually have that. I don't know if you can have it in... For example, you're almost asking for most of the area of Los Angeles to have that. I know that they can do it specifically. They use that to catch specific plans and other types of zoning informations that may not be on the city building code, on the zoning code, but something that they want to have DOT or DCP or one of the other departments look at. Building and safety will put that in, but it's probably...
Because the problem is, is it's, again, sometimes by the time you know that it is a problem, it's too late.
Right.
For some of that, that the buildings have already been approved or whatever, so...
Right. And that's why I'm requesting that you instruct building and safety to put in that ZI number. That way, no building permits would be issued until that's taken care of.
That helps me. Colfax and Magnolia and the freeway and going, you know, and I could go through my district and identify all of those. I'm trying to figure out a way that is a more productive way for building and safety and DOT and planning to do this without having it be a crisis point in which we're looking at that.
Right.
So maybe what I'll do is look at my staff and Maria and my planning staff to work with you and building and safety to identify a motion that says, at least identifying the corridors in which we've had substantial problems thus far that we already know. But it, again, it's... I'm interested in structural change so that it doesn't require an elected official or a angry constituency to come forward to have to do that, that there's a recognition within the departments. Whoa, you know, we've had six new condo developments on the street, and we're interested in how that's going to impact us.
And I could just reiterate, and I'll second her motion enthusiastically, give you just a real-life example. There's a structure that wanting to go up, it's 31 stories, somewhere near the 90 freeway and Lincoln, okay? That whole area has gone through a morphing into condos and into other structures. Plus, of course, Santa Monica's gridlock creation on that Lincoln is just horrific. So my folks say cumulative effect, look at all these things that have happened, and if we don't have a comprehensive strategy, one little piece here could be the tipping point to create the huge gridlock. It isn't that particular development project. It's the cumulative effect of all of them. That's why when I was a candidate, I talked about planning and transportation being joined at the hip.
Right.
Everything absolutely has to be vetted in a larger picture than just the one project, but obviously taking in those effects.
Right. Where there are specific plans, transportation-specific plans, the cumulative effect is actually taken into account by the specific plan, by the charging of the fees that is charged in those areas. That... The fees that are charged for the projects that come in that may not be doing traffic studies, but nevertheless pay a traffic impact fee or a project impact fee, that fee is supposed to be used to take that into account, that cumulative effect, which normally is not taken into account.
Our problem is there's only... And we'll talk at number six, which is about...
Right.
We have... But is that we only have 12 specific plans in the city, and those aren't necessarily where some of this may be happening.
Correct.
So I'm not... I know you're just the DOT person sitting in front of me, so I apologize. Not, you know...
I understand.
You've been great to us in the valley, so thank you. My staff appreciates it. But I think what I'd like to do is, as we... Before we go to council, and maybe my planning staff just walked in, while Dale will look at ways in which we can work with you to identify something in Mr. Rosen Dell and second that motion.
We'd love to have Bree Asher and my staff interact with you, too, to look at all of our different plans.
And we would love to work with your staff and building and safety and Department of City Planning to come up with a plan.
Because I know sometimes you don't know what's happening. You're the last in the, you know, the food chain, so to speak, on that.
Yes, that's correct.
And it's already gone through building and safety and planning, and all of a sudden it comes in that direction. Okay. Before we take any action, Lisa Sorkin.
Lisa Sorkin, Studio City Neighborhood Council. I have a suggestion. It was a great idea, the ZI, and that's how the Rio went on to all the properties. So it can be in a huge area, apparently, because it's all along the whole entire route of the river. All the homes or businesses within 1,000 square feet, I think... I mean, 1,000 feet have that on their property profiles. So it certainly can be done, I guess, or somehow you get it on. You have to talk to Mr. Reyes, how he did it. But that would be an answer that would be great.
That was a... That was a specific river, you know, that had... That this is, there could be a, you know, piece of a street in Greg Smith's district out in Chatsworth that meets that criteria or one. It's not... It's a little more difficult, but it is the same concept if it's possible. So I think we want to figure out how that would work. But I think the ZI number is a good idea.
Yeah, that'd be terrific. Thank you.
Can I clarify what we're doing? Are we adopting the recommendation that you have for us? And then we... Instead of doing a separate motion, you could instruct building and safety to work with DOT and planning to implement the ZI number that we've described here? Is that how you want to do it, or...
I think we should instruct them to do that, to come back with a plan. We may do a separate motion if we have some ideas on how we really specifically want that to happen, or we'll amend it on council floor, one of the two. But include that language in there.
So that will be a report back from... Okay. And then we still are approving the DOT recommendation? Okay.
Yes, for this particular site or this particular stretch.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to see you, Sergio.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to item number six, which is DOT report relative to the Ventura-Coingo Boulevard corridor specific plan trust fund status and action plan.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Councilman Rosen Dell. We are reporting back. This item was before you a few months ago, when we came with the recommendation that we would propose a few short-term measures to spend some of the money in the Ventura Corridor specific plan to do some short-term improvements. And then we had some medium-range improvements that required... Medium and long-range improvements that required amendment of the plan to allow us to move away from the 19 intersections that have been specified in the plan that the money could be spent on. During that meeting, we laid out some improvements that were signal improvements and some intersection widenings. But we also asked that we be directed to work with the city attorney's office to see if our recommendations are in line with the guidelines of the plan. While upon doing that, we realized that the plan is very rigid and airtight and doesn't really allow for much movement away from the 19 intersections that have been specified. Although, we were able to find a way to spend about $3.3 million of the funds on things that were not disallowed by the plan, which are basically signal improvements, some intersection widenings, and some corridor-wide improvements that would still link the 19 intersections together. So working with Mr. Fisher's staff, we came up with some recommendations to spend the money in the short term, but also we would have to come up with a way to amend the plan to be able to do more meaningful and more wide-ranging improvements on the corridor or, as we discussed before, on the crossing corridors or parallel corridors. This report came... Was signed and approved before your other motion came out related to the same. And if you wish, I can kind of explain that so you could take care of some of the questions that might be here. This report basically includes all the intersection widenings and signal improvements and ATSAQ modifications along the corridor, plus a sidewalk improvement that was brought to our attention through Ms. Sorkin, that we worked with the city attorney and realized that the plan allows for some money to be spent on sidewalk improvements and be linked to the movement along the corridor. So $300,000 on the sidewalk improvement and $3 million on other improvements. Now, this doesn't really answer what we're going to do in the long term. And your second motion that came out, that this report had already left our office and we couldn't retract it, but we're going to come back to you in the future and explain what we plan to do for the medium-to-long-term plan. As I may have explained before, the current plan not only is very rigid in how we can spend the money, it's also very rigid on spending any money out of the plan to revise the plan. The plan has a horizon year of 2010. So in order for us to have a plan in place before that horizon date arrives, we have to start awarding a contract now, because this process takes about two to three years and will cost about $1 million. As things are now, we can't spend any money from the plan to hire a consultant and...
Do you spend it in 2010?
And to hire it to spend it now, to have a plan in place by 2010. The plan was basically written in a unique way. Any other plan that we have now allows for 10% of the funds to be spent on administrative purposes, which would be hiring a contractor to revise the plan, update it, and whatnot. But this plan basically doesn't allow for that. It says 10% of funds collected. So in this year, if we haven't collected anything, there is no 10% to be spent. What we are recommending, and we'll come to you in the next report, is we discuss this with the city attorney, and the one way we can think of is that we borrow money from the plan, based on your approval and city council approval, to borrow funds from the plan, to hire a consultant, to update the plan for 2010, but build into the plan a way to repay the money back from the future funds collected. And also devise a way for the future... In the future, to be able to spend some more money to update the plan when that date... When that horizon date arrives. That might be 10 or 20 years after that.
Okay. And the 2010 date is one in which is in the current specific plan that says we have to update it by then?
Correct. Yes. EIR was done with the horizon date of 2010. And for us to have something in place by then, we have to start now. Actually, we should have started earlier, but we...
And is that the whole specific plan or just the component of the transportation?
The whole specific plan. So at this point, what we're asking is for you to allow us to spend $3.3 million on short-term improvements that we have identified and are in line with the way the plan is written. And in our future report, we'll come back and propose a way to hire a consultant and pay for it from the fund to update the plan for 2010 horizon year.
And one of the things we asked, I know in the last discussion of this, was to go out to the community and get their input. Have you done that on the recommended $3.3 million proposal?
We have not. And as you may recall, when I was explaining, our short-term improvements are basically what we can do right now. Anything under the sun that can be done, we are proposing, because the specific plan doesn't allow you to walk away from the 19 intersection. But our recommendation was that, at the time, we thought you could just approve us... Allow us to go ahead and amend the plan. And we mentioned that we would go to the community and get their input and devise medium-to-long-range improvements that could be done with the current plan. But since that's not possible, at this point, it would create unrealistic expectation if we had gone to the community and said, "Well, what do you think?" But if you couldn't do it, then that would kind of create more resentment. So we thought, "These are the things we can do now. Let's do them, because that's all we can do right now." But in our future report, when we get the approval, then we have to go to the community and get their input and see what we can include in the future plan.
But is there anything on here that... Because we also, I mean, you may recall, in a call for projects and an issue up at Laurel Canyon and... Laurel Canyon and Mohollant, which was one in... For the call and all of that, you know, which was a lot of controversy, because the community said, no one came and talked to us about this. Are there any, and maybe I'll ask Lisa this too, I mean, are there any items that are on here that the community is going to say, and that was one of the reasons I want to do outreach, because it may be, it's the only things we can spend it on, but someone will say, you know, I really don't want, although I think they do, but the sidewalk, you know, on the north side of Ventura. I mean, is there anything here that you see that is suddenly going to-
Well, aside from the sidewalk, we have two proposals for two intersection widenings, add a right turn or left turn lane. Everything else is signal improvement.
Okay.
So, and these are mostly, well, the left arrows, left-hand phasing are visible, but some of the other proposals are invisible to the public.
So I think those, however, that if you're going to widen and it's going to impact the business or whatever, I think we need to do some outreach as well to those areas. I don't know exactly which ones those are here.
Yes, ma'am.
Before I have any other questions, I don't know, Lisa, you had filled out, as well as Kathy.
Well, I brought you some photographs of the sidewalk. It just happened, Lisa Sarkin, Studio City Neighborhood Council. There just happened to be a man in a wheelchair trying to get down the part of the street without, I didn't set him up, I promise you. He just happened to be going down there, I couldn't believe it. And, you know, we don't have a crosswalk in that whole area from Tahunga to Colfax. So, you know, it's a major problem. I'm hoping that you're going to vote to approve the sidewalks. The other thing is, I wanted to ask you specifically, Councilmember Gruhl, that I think that the Tahunga left turn lane is already on the books in whatever department it comes from. Because before the Colfax Bridge construction, we have to have that left turn lane on Tahunga. And there is no left-hand turn lane now. It was the only one that was left out, which is kind of strange because it is one of the 19 listed intersections. So maybe it doesn't have to come out of this money if it's coming from someplace else.
Do you, Sean, maybe answer that?
Yes, that question, I guess, you posed it to Jennifer and Jennifer emailed me, and my response was, I checked with the design division that is working on that. And that project may or may not be funded by the contract or consultant, and it could be a year or two from now. We thought, we have this money available now, we can do it on a much faster pace. So that could be done a year or two from now. Again, it's your pleasure, if you'd like us to hold off on that, we can, but we thought we could do it faster.
I think the point is, of course, we want it faster, but there was, if there's money set aside for that Colfax, I mean Tahunga and Ventura Boulevard, that that money not now go to, no, you know, disrespect for my colleague here, but go over to the west side when it was promised, in essence, for that particularly bridge site and budgeted for that bridge site.
I will double-check that if you wish, because the way I read the email that I got back from our design group, it wasn't a sure thing, but I will check on that. If it is a sure thing and I know the actual date and I can advise you again and you can decide.
I think it was from, and Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, but that the public meetings that were held, numerous of those, in the, in the, in fact, when the bridge was going to be closed, that that was one of the things that was going to happen, similar to Moore Park and Laurel Canyon, can't remember the others. There was two or three other locations that were going to have some upgrade to deal with the issue that that bridge would be closed for a year, at least.
Two years.
Two years.
I understand. And again, this, I'm working on this, but this is not my area. My area is Westchester and Southern. So I don't know, but the way I read the email that I got back, that wasn't a sure thing and there was no real date attached to it. So I will check, and if you wish, I can come back or I can just take that-
Before it goes to council, I just want to have the clear answer because the community had been guaranteed prior to us having, even knowing that there was this 5.5 million or however much it was in this fund, that they were going to have that left-hand turn signal. So I just want to make sure that they're, you know, given with one hand and taken from the other.
Certainly. I'll let you know.
If I may, it absolutely has to be in some way, both of those left turn, but one of them isn't in the plan area. We have to have that before we, they knock down the bridge.
Right.
And that's supposed to be June.
Yes.
Nothing's happening really on Moore Park, so I think that's going to be pushed back.
And as you know, we're not happy with Moore Park and, engineering isn't here, so I can't give them-
Well, no, and they haven't worked on it for at least a month.
And again, so you can feel comfortable with this report, we're not specifying, we're not spelling out each individual location that needs to be improved here. It's pretty much a corridor-wide recommendation and we're asking you to approve the funding to be released for that. Now, if that's the case for this particular corridor, we can take it out and either find a replacement or just not spend all the money.
Or use the money, if that other money isn't coming in for a while, that it would be used for another project within that same geographic area.
Sure.
Okay. Sorry.
Kathy Deladoni, and I'm representing, I guess, maybe the Tarzana Improvement Association today, even though I'm on all the different associations, Neighborhood Council. I was here at the October 1st meeting, and I know you specifically directed DOT to go out and outreach. Tarzana has received zero outreach, and we're very disappointed about that because there is, there are a lot of things put in here. I mean, originally, it was 2.3, this is 3.3. We want to know about the signal, the left-hand turn signals. We already have a number of left-hand turn signals at these intersections. We want to know about the widening of Tampa. That's a big question. There is a business right there on the corner. There are a lot of things that, questions that we have that we would like to know. It's not that we're not going to support it, but we really do want our question-
You remembered, I did say that.
Yeah, I know, I was here. And so we would really want to have all the information and then be able to, you know, comment on it and, but, before. And then also, we want to know other things too, which is going to fit in, is that a big project in Tarzana now is putting up a half a million dollars in mitigation fees for synchronization of the intersections. How does that fit into what's happening here in this report? So these are all the questions, and before anything is, you know, sent to city council, we really do want to get those questions and then come back to you on that.
I think what, maybe somewhere in between, which is to ask the department to go, I mean, there's Tarzana, there's a, I don't know if the Neighborhood Council in the Woodland Hills area, but to go to the three or four Neighborhood Councils within this next month to get input and to share with them these ideas that have been, you know, proposed.
We've had our outreach, I forgot to mention that, I'm sorry.
Certainly. We can go and meet with them. And again, most of these improvements that we are proposing here are signal upgrades or improvements or infrastructure improvements. As far as any physical improvements, there are only two locations where we are proposing a widening at the intersection level, maybe 200, 300 feet, just to add a left turn or right turn pocket.
And I think, again, sometimes, just like in the whole discussion of Pico, Olympic or others, which is, it's the unknown versus the known.
Absolutely.
And so I think that it would behoove us to go out and at least describe, here's the location, here's what, it's not going to impact this business or it's going to impact a little bit, to be able to do that. And so maybe we can work with your staff and my staff to see what, and the other council members that are impacted, Weiss and Zine, and I think a little bit of Tom LeBonde, I'm not sure if there's anything that's on Tom LeBonde's, and set up some community meetings if you could help us get people from Tarzana. Just to explain, there may be no controversy, but I think we would like to do that before it goes to council.
That's great.
Okay. Okay. Thank you both for being here, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for pitching anything.
So, Madam Chair, for the record, we are approving the recommendations of DOT with the provision that they conduct outreach to the respective neighborhood organizations.
Yeah, of course. We'll wait to schedule to council until we've had that, those meetings. And I'm hoping that we could get them pretty quickly.
Sure.
Okay. Some which could be regular scheduled Neighborhood Councils, or if they're willing, Kathy's willing to put together a meeting off their regular agenda kind of thing, then we can do that too. Okay. Thank you. Okay, last but not least.
Last item is a CLA report relative to the city's parking cash-out policy. This has been before the committee quite a few times. The issue, if you remember, is that California law mandates employers with over 50 employees in an air basin designated non-attainment area who provide subsidized parking for their employees offer a cash allowance in lieu of the parking space. Back in June, the committee instructed the CLA to report back with a proposal to implement a parking cash-out program based on information collected via the 2007 City Tax forms on employer-leased parking. The CLA report has three recommendations or options for the committee to consider. The first one is that the Office of Finance would include an informational flyer with annual business tax renewal information, informing businesses of their obligation to implement the cash-out law. The second is instructing Office of Finance to require businesses to provide the proof of compliance with the cash-out program. And the last is to include in the legislative program support for clarification of authorization of the cash-out law. The bottom line on this is, we really don't have legal authority to be requiring anyone to do this. So the second recommendation directing, how did they say it, requiring businesses to provide, the city attorney is not real comfortable with that, but that was about as far as she was willing to go. We still may be challenged on that. So it's really up to you how you want to proceed.
And I, when I introduced the motion, my understanding was that we didn't have any real authority to do it, other than to educate part of that. I mean, and until we had this information, we didn't know how extensive it would be to do that. So I think that it's interesting because I think the number is 385 businesses. Do we know how many leased parking spaces they have?
No, that wasn't part of the questionnaire. So there are, yeah, 385 who responded clearly that they were subject to this, and then 282 who never responded. So some of those or all of those, 282, could also be included. So we're looking at less than 500 businesses.
Although if 500 businesses have 100 parking spaces, again, I don't know, that could be 5,000, which is if we could get, you know, 2,500 or 5,000 off the roads, that'd be great.
Right. But it's a manageable number of businesses that we could inform and get through.
So I think what we would do then is just adopt the CLA's report, is that correct?
Well, actually, we don't really have a firm recommendation in here. We kind of gave you options. So if you want to do the informa, I know, the informational one would be the recommendation, summary one.
Instructing to, and one was to, as a condition to renew their business tax license?
No, the first one is just instructing the Office of Finance to include an informational flyer with the business tax renewal information. It would inform them of their obligation to do this under state law, but we would not be requiring or anything like that. And then we could see what kind of response we got back from them.
Okay. So you wouldn't, you're not recommending right now the proof of compliance to renew their business tax license?
No, that's where we're getting into uncharted territory.
Okay. And in the two, but are you recommending the state legislative part, the clarification of that?
That would be something that would, again, be a policy decision if you want us to include that in the legislative program. We're a little bit late this session since their deadline is coming up in terms of introducing, but it's something that we should consider. If you want to, if you want to move on this and keep this as a priority, we need to work on state legislation and make it clear.
I think we could look at other legislative packages that are going forward and talk to, for instance, Assemblymember Fuhr, and if there's some way it fits into another bill that he is potentially introducing between now and the deadline.
Okay.
Okay. You all right with that?
Yeah, I'm perfectly all right.
Okay. So one and three of the-
One and three.
All right.
And three would include looking at item number two, is whether or not that's an option.
That's our ultimate goal, is, yeah, to be responsible.
Yeah.
Okay.
Before you adjourn.
Yes.
Could I ask Mr. Fisher to come up for a quick second, just to shout out here? I just want to thank Laura McClellan and Rita Robertson, who are focusing, and we look forward to this. The President came to town last week, my Brentwood citizenry were impacted, some had their cars towed. We don't know what the notices were. Some people claimed there were no notices, others say, well, they were torn down. I don't know the story, but I can tell you how grateful I am that Rita Robertson and Laura, late Friday, were on the phone to each other, and we look forward to an immediate response. My phones are ringing off the hook from my Brentwood people. It's not that they like or dislike the President, it's just that their cars have been impounded and they just went nuts over it. I know this is not on the agenda, it happened so quickly. I don't know if in a shout-out sense, do you have anything encouraging to tell me?
To be honest, I didn't know about this situation, but maybe Carolyn has an update on that.
If it's okay, Ms. Gruhl, could I get a kind of an answer from us?
Carolyn Jackson Alley, DOT. Laura McClellan called me on Friday afternoon late, and I called Rita, and I've already talked to our parking enforcement people this morning. We're waiting for some additional information from your staff as regards where the vehicles were parked that were towed. And once we have that, we'll verify that they were correctly posted and that sort of thing, and I'll be getting back to Ms. McClellan.
Yeah, and we thank you so much for Friday jumping through the hoops. Rita and I were on the phone Friday night, and Laura was sending emails back to my constituents. We're all pretty upset, but I appreciate what you just told us.
Not a problem. Thank you.
The current president or the ex-president?
Oh, it's a guy named Bush.
Oh, that guy.
Yeah, some guy named Bush was coming to town.
Got it.
Behind every light, there's a Bush or something. Whatever.
All right.
What happened was, the President landed there and they blocked off everything and they towed cars. And my constituents are swearing there was no notice at all on those streets and that, you know, we should obviously reimburse them, apologize and all that. And so I just appreciate what Rita's been doing and what Laura's been doing and trying to make a connection on that information and so on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, meeting's adjourned. Thank you for being here, Mr. Rosendahl.